I'd like to call the 3046 Regular Village Board Meeting to order. It's February 11, 2013, a little after 7:00 PM. Clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
Lentz.
Here.
Semple.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Nutchnig.
Boss.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
First item of business is to approve the minutes from January 28, 2013. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion is by Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
By Meyer. Any discussion on the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under other reports, I want to think it's page six, said that I requested the board consider increasing the FYE 14 budget from $2 million to $3 million for street repairs, and I think I said from $2 million to $2.5 million.
I recollect $2.5 million.
I recall that being correct.
Okay, we'll make that correction. Any others? The clerk will note that correction for the record and call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Minutes are approved. Our next item on the agenda is an opportunity for public comments. If somebody has a public comment they would like to address to the board, now would be the time to do so, so please let me know, and we'll call you up one at a time if you have a public comment. So just raise your hand or something, jump up and down, so I know. It does not look like anyone wishes to make a public comment at this time, so I'll close the floor. And we have two presentations/awards this evening. The Human Relations Commission has been busy at work this year, and one of the activities has been to select some award recipients for what are called the 2013 Diversity Awards. Amanda, did you want to say anything, or who would like to say something? Amanda is our staff liaison who interfaces with the Human Relations Commission.
Yeah, we started this award two years ago, and so this is the third time that the Village Board will be recognizing individuals and organizations in Mundaline for just being proactive in the community to, you know, recognize that there are different people that live here and try to work with everybody and hopefully, you know, put some recognition that there are just a lot of really good people that do good work in the community, and this year we have some great recipients of the award, so.
Okay.
It'll be great.
Well, thank you. We're all pretty familiar with the concept that diversity might pertain to race or culture, but there's actually a whole host of other ways that diversity might be thought of, and I think you'll see that as you listen to the proclamations and the awards. The first category is for an individual, and tonight we're here to honor Valerie Walker. So Valerie, where are you at? Okay. Valerie, I'm going to read this proclamation. And do we have, what do we have up? Where are the things, the frame things? Those over this way. And we had a, do we have a cardboard thing for this, a folder?
We have.
Holders? Okay, good. So I'm going to read this. It's a mayoral proclamation recognizing Diversity Award recipient for 2013 Valerie Walker. It says, "Whereas the Village Board believes in the importance of celebrating the actions of individuals and organizations for extraordinary efforts in recognizing and embracing diversity by annually accepting nominations and selecting recipients of a Diversity Award, and whereas the Human Relations Commission received and reviewed nominations for potential Diversity Award recipients, and whereas Bob Adams, a Mundaline resident and AYSO board member, nominated Valerie Walker, very important player program administrator, which is a program that provides children with special needs the opportunity to participate in soccer with the help of a buddy, and whereas the program benefits children that may have conditions such as mild autism, hearing impairments, cerebral palsy, and Down Syndrome. Ms. Walker brought the program to AYSO in 2003 and has actively grown the program over the years. Ms. Walker actively promotes the VIP soccer program, and it serves as a model throughout Lake County and the Midwest. Ms. Walker also commits time as a Diamond Lake School District 76 board member, a Girl Scout leader, and a church volunteer. And whereas at their January 17-23, 2013 meeting, the Human Relations Commission compared the nomination with the Diversity Award criteria and found the nomination meets the criteria outlined in the program, and whereas the Human Relations Commission unanimously recommends Valerie Walker in the Community Organization category as an individual to the Village Board for Diversity Award, now therefore be proclaimed by the Mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Mundaline, Lake County, Illinois, that Valerie Walker is to be recognized for demonstrating leadership and embodying excellence in creating programs to celebrate diversity, promote tolerance, and build cultural understanding. Yet further resolved that Valerie Walker will be presented with a Diversity Award in recognition of her work, proclaimed, signed, and sealed this 11th day of February 2013 in the Village of Mundaline, Lake County, Illinois, signed by myself and the clerk." So Valerie, if you'd come up and get this. And spin that around whichever way you want, or take it out of the holder if you like. Rip it out of there. There you go.
All right, thank you. I just really want to acknowledge the folks in this room that have been part of this adventure with me, many since the very beginning, so I have invited to really share the celebration with me. In all this good, hard work over the last 10 years, we have VIP soccer players in the room, we have VIP buddies, we have coaches, we have referees, we have AYSO board members, which is an amazingly supportive family to my family in this community of the AYSO soccer community, and most importantly, we have parents that have entrusted us with the care and the fun and the teaching and the learning of their children through the VIP soccer program. So if you're connected to this award in any of these ways, would you please rise as you're able to do that? Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have another important award this evening, which is for the category of organization, community category organization. And this award goes to Lake County Center for Independent Living. So it's a mayoral proclamation recognizing Diversity Award recipient for 2013, the Lake County Center for Independent Living. This one reads, "Whereas the Village Board believes in the importance of celebrating the actions of individuals and organizations for extraordinary efforts in recognizing and embracing diversity by annually accepting nominations and selecting recipients of Diversity Award, and whereas the Human Relations Commission received and reviewed nominations for potential Diversity Award recipients, whereas Heather Barkall, an employee of the organization, nominated the Lake County Center for Independent Living, an organization dedicated to empowering people with disabilities to lead self-directed lives, as valued members of the community, for a Diversity Award. And whereas the Lake County Center for Independent Living assists members of the community with a variety of disabilities, training is provided to develop community leaders, teach skills, provide disability awareness in society, presentations are offered to assist with addressing society's perceptions often placed on people with disabilities. Particular focus is made on how people with disabilities are the one minority group that crosses all racial and cultural lines, and whereas their January 17, 2013 meeting, the Human Relations Commission compared the nomination with the Diversity Award criteria and found the nomination meets the criteria outlined in the program, whereas the Human Relations Commission unanimously recommends the Lake County Center for Independent Living in the Community Organization category to the Village Board for Diversity Award, now therefore be proclaimed by the Mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Mundaline, Lake County, Illinois, that the Lake County Center for Independent Living is to be recognized for demonstrating leadership and embodying excellence in creating programs to celebrate diversity, promote tolerance, and build cultural understanding. Yet further resolved that the Lake County Center for Independent Living be presented with Diversity Award in recognition of the organization's work, it is signed by me and the village clerk as of this date." Who would like to receive this on behalf of the Lake County Center for Independent Living?
We at the center are very honored that you have given us this award. We are very proud to be serving people with any type of disability at the center. We have been in Mundaline for 20 years now, and we're serving Lake and McHenry County, and we're really happy, and we hope that all of you can come and visit our center for a tour. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say I'm really glad to see a lot of people in the room who are here, and they're happy about something and not angry. So that's always a relief when the parking lot's full and everybody's happy. So thank you all for coming and celebrating these two very important awards and the work of Valerie and also the work of the Independent, Center for Independent Living this evening. I appreciate it very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
I wonder if, you know, these are very outstanding and deserving awards, people who have made a great deal of difference in the Village of Mundaline, and it wouldn't be possible without the Human Relations Commission, and I wonder if we could introduce those people, if any, who are here, but they deserve a round of applause also.
Amanda, you want to help us with that?
Well, we have a couple people across the hall, but they're two legislative members of the, Allen Henry's the chair, two in the back, and we have Chief Sipwire, Maria Sanchez, Karen Schuman, we've got all across the hall, and Jennifer Care, Robert Lee, and Dave Stilwell, and so, all really great individuals that study their time, meet about once a month, and we talk about what's going on in the community. So there's book clubs, health and wellness expo, looking at maybe a multicultural festival this year, so, other different things going on, the Diversity Awards, another item, a lot of hard work, I think.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to recognize some individuals with regard to the CERT program, and Chief Sashco kind of heads that up, so we'll put you on the spot, Chief, and have you kind of take the lead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Village Board, and guests. We're really honored tonight to bring to you a report on the Community Emergency Response Team, and just a brief little history on that. They actually started in 1985. It was a civilian-based response program out of Los Angeles County, and really the prominence that was most recognized was during the 1989 World Series with the earthquakes, and we teach that in the class. Roger Wickersheim, one of our Public Works employees, is one of the instructors, is in the back, and we emphasize the fact that the first responders, although it may be law enforcement and fire, really are those of you in the community, when we do have a disaster and we saw what happened yesterday in southern Mississippi, that really when you get together as a community following one of those disasters, really it's everybody in the neighborhoods that are the first responders. So this program is really outstanding and has grown over the years, and we're going to do some introductions here in a second and show you this program, but it's really important based on if there is a tragic event in the community, especially weather-based in this area, that we have these trained people. They go through a lot of different training exercises and trauma, and you name it, building, collapse recognition, I mean, it's pretty extensive, and this group has grown, as you'll see in the presentation over the years. The team is led up by the village volunteers, basically, although it's kind of born from the fire department over the years and instruction, we really have quite a group of people within the community that are not employees of the village that run this. Those that lead this up right now are Julie Rick, Karen Schuman, Gary Gunther, and Lindahl, and they're really the core of the group, and there's a lot of our green shirts in the room here, including Trustee Meyer, and it's really interesting to see, and you'll see in this presentation, Julie, maybe if you want to come up and give a little history of the team, but, you know, what they've done and what they've become as far as a really important asset to the community. So Julie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Chief. I am going to leave the statistics and the details about the team to the presentation. As Chief mentioned, we have a large contingent of our team in the back here, but also within the past year, we've had a number of individuals who have participated in the training course to become CERT qualified, and they have elected to join our team, and those are the people that we really want to recognize tonight. So as I call your names, if you would stand up and back, the new members this year are Dale Arnold, Bill Burnett, John Breen, Tony Crisera, Lori Gardner, Chuck Gilbert, Brandon Horch, Ed Kahn, Dawn Kahn, Dave Leonard, Gail Robison, Bill Sowers, and Mary Sowers. And I think another interesting thing that has happened with this last training is the Mundaline CERT team is really getting some recognition throughout the county. We actually have members on our team now who live within the Wildwood and southern Gray's Lake area, but because they do not have CERT teams in their community, they are, they've been qualified to participate on the Mundaline team. So the recognition of our group is growing, and that's a really exciting thing. We appreciate the opportunity tonight to share a little bit about our team, both with the board and with the community at large, so I'll leave it to my techie underling up there to get things started.
Great. That's the way it starts. You got there, Chief?
The Mundaline Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, operates under the direction of the Village Emergency Coordinator and is a member of the Lake County Citizens Corps. Volunteer participation begins with a 20-hour training course that covers numerous topics including preparedness, medical emergencies, light search and rescue, hazardous materials, terrorism, disaster psychology, and incident command structure. Upon completion of the course, participants may choose to join the CERT team, where they commit to attend bimonthly meetings, complete a series of FEMA courses, and support community events. Our members are also trained in first aid, CPR, and fire suppression. Training is also underway for the 18-member management team at Home Depot. This new initiative is the first to involve Mundaline business community directly in emergency preparedness. The team hopes to encourage participation by other businesses to increase overall village readiness. 66 individuals have been trained since the team's inception in 2007. More new members were trained in 2012 than in past years, indicating an increasing interest in both individual readiness and community involvement. There are currently 37 active members on the team. An important role of CERT is to educate others in the community, encouraging all citizens to be prepared for large-scale disaster situations. Information is provided at various venues, including Mundaline Community Days, the Fire Department Open House, and the Lake County Fair. Like other public service organizations in our community, interaction and cooperation with other groups is a valuable component of training. A comprehensive emergency sheltering plan has been developed in cooperation with Mundaline High School leadership. CERT team members from Mundaline and Fremont Township held a joint drill to go through the steps of opening and running a shelter. The controlled practice scenario gave team members an opportunity to evaluate protocols and make adjustments that will increase effectiveness in the event of a real emergency. In 2012, CERT members contributed 1,420 volunteer hours, a 21% increase over hours volunteered in 2011. 10 members provided 80 hours of traffic control and pedestrian safety at Park on Park, freeing village personnel for other tasks. Working in pairs, 23 members worked 99 hours to staff a first aid station during Community Days, a service they have been providing since 2009. The team played a key role during the 2011 winter storm. Mundaline Fire Station Number One was opened as an emergency shelter for 27 stranded motors. The shelter was open for 22 hours, 11 CERT members worked a total of 88 hours. In the aftermath of a strong windstorm in July that same year, CERT members assessed damage in two neighborhoods and ensured the safety of residents who lived in the area where power lines were down. This assistance allowed fire, police, and public works personnel to direct their efforts to more critical situations. 11 team members gave 47 hours of service. The CERT team is committed to expanding education and internet-based resources for the community, building an inventory of emergency management supplies, refining the emergency sheltering plan, and providing ongoing support for special events such as Park on Park and Mundaline Community Day.
I also neglected, Thelma and Louise, come over here, too. We have two four-legged members of our team who did not go through the training, but they are an important part, they are therapy dogs, and they are trained to be with people in a number of different situations, but they can be certainly a very calming influence as well as a big help for us on a PR side. So this is Thelma and Louise, who are also team members. So welcome, new members. We appreciate your time, and we appreciate the time as well of the other members of our team, so thank you very much.
Good job. Very much for the presentation. It's obviously one of the newer programs of the Village, but certainly filling an important role and need, and I'm sure will continue to expand. Chief, anything else to say?
No, just thank you to the group. The independence of what they've done over the years is just phenomenal, and it's really exciting to see how they've grown and see some of the programs that they're working on and continue to foster, so just congratulations to the group and thank you.
Continuing on into the agenda, we're going to skip public hearings since we have none, and we'll go on to my report. If there's other places people need to go this evening, we won't take offense to anyone needing to leave. We have a matter regarding the downtown redevelopment is next. We're having requests for a motion to adopt a resolution clarifying the exclusive lot election rights person to the redevelopment agreement buying between the Village of Mundaline and Weston Solutions, Inc. Somebody wish to make that motion?
No, moved.
Second.
Motion by Lentz. Second by Boss. Any discussion on the motion?
That was Sullivan.
Sullivan? Okay.
Wasn't it?
Total finish.
Might have been a tie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
That's fine.
We'll give it to you, Trustee Boss, if you don't mind. So we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion? Clerk, call the roll.
Lentz.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. I have no other reports, so that'll take us to Trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this microphone working? Can you hear me?
It's working, yep. They're all a touch on the soft side tonight, but they're working.
All right. I have several things that I'd like to do tonight. One of them is call a meeting for February 25 at 6:30 PM in this location, and it's related to Emerald Ashbore Management Review Plan. And then I have several different motions. The first one is related to weed control and fertilization on a bid award, and that would be Exhibit PW-1. The first motion is to award the Weed Control and Fertilization Program FY 14 through 16 contract to Rossborough Partners, Inc. at 342 Fourth Street, Libertyville, Illinois, 60048, and authorize the village administrator to execute the contract.
Your motion is by Meyer. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
By Lentz. So any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Meyer.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
The second motion in that same category is a motion to authorize a purchase order for an amount not to exceed $20,845 for landscape maintenance to Rossborough Partners, Inc.
Okay, motion is by Meyer. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Trustee Boss. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Meyer.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
The next category for a motion is related to seasonal staffing, and that would be Exhibit PW-2, and this one is a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the village administrator to execute the Youth Employment Program Agreement with Lake County to authorize the Director of Public Works and Engineering to sign the agreement as the workplace supervisor.
Your motion is by Meyer. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
By Trustee Lentz. Any discussion?
I had a question pertaining to the folks that would be hired. Would they be Mundaline residents?
That is the preference of the program, that they are working within the village, that they reside, but we have very little control over that because it's through the county that these people are employed.
Comes from the county. Okay, thank you.
So this goes back to where we started years ago, which you could get a summer job working like Mr. Semple did for the village cotton grass when you were a kid.
Yes, with the exception that the village isn't fronting the cost, it's the county fronting the cost for this.
Good. That program was done away with for liability concerns or something, so nice to see we've, all our governmental ideas have been able to work their way through all the worries about that, and kids can get summer jobs again. Clerk, call the roll.
Meyer.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
All right, and the last motion, it relates to lighting retrofit of village facilities, the grant modification, and you can find that in Exhibit Public Works-3, and that would be a motion to approve and issue a purchase order in the amount of $96,854.16 to Twin Supplies Limited for the scope of revision to the lighting upgrade of Village Facilities Project.
Okay, motion is by Trustee Meyer. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Trustee Boss. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Meyer.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
And that would be all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Finance Committee, Trustee Sullivan.
Mayor, this evening we have three motions, the first of which is a motion to accept the Village's 2012 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the management letters thereunder. You have a lengthy exhibit, and I think everyone is in receipt of the actual financial The letters thereunder express some of the same concerns that they have in the past, that is, we don't have a separation of duties in the handling of receipts or the handling of our financial documents in depositories, bond houses. We recognize that, and I recognize that, and have some degree of oversight in that regard, but there's not much a small organization can do in regard to that other than hire more employees, and to some extent, from a financial standpoint, that defeats the whole purposes of the oversight, that is, to save money. purposes of the oversight, that is, to save money. I think there's a degree of oversight that all of us need to have, as well as our Director of Finance, and I'm very sure that he has that oversight. A degree of confidence in our employees, although individuals with experience in regard to theft and legal activity in financial institutions will tell you, it's always the ones you trust the most. They'll pull you. Nevertheless, I'm confident, despite of these letters of concern that we've had, that our accounting is accurate. Excuse me.
Does somebody wish to make that motion? Your motion is by Simple. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Lentz. Discussion on the motion? Clerk call the roll.
Simple.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
And Voss.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Second motion, is one, accept the nine-month staff financial report. I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion is by Sullivan, second by Simple, to accept the nine-month staff financial report. Any discussion on the motion? Clerk call the roll.
Sullivan.
Did you want to discuss something?
You'll notice the overtime expenses double what we budgeted. My speech handicap leaves me to be rather blunt. Why is this overtime double what we budgeted?
Well, there's, part of the reason, it's probably a multi-faceted answer, but part of the reason for that is attributable to people that have been, are out on disability, people that have left the organization. We've had to refill those positions with people on overtime. I think part of it is a budgeting amount that I think historically, we've probably budgeted less than what we actually have. Although there's been a reduction in overtime since the beginning of the Great Recession, I think that there still needs to be done, there still needs, more to be done there. But the other part of that is, is that, you know, we've reduced our staff since 2009. I think we're probably down about 13 positions, if my memory serves me correct. And so, part of that has been somewhat of a philosophy too, in terms of paying our current employees overtime to make up the gap, as opposed to hiring more staff, which in the long run, I don't think saves the village money. I think sometimes it's more prudent to pay overtime than it is to bring on additional staff. And so, that number kind of ebbs and flows with what's going on in the organization. And so, I think combination of all of that, I think we've been under-budgeting a little bit on that, is a big part of it, but I think the board discussed two weeks ago, some of the transitions we've had in the Police Department that's driven up overtime. I know the Fire Department has had similar situation with somebody out on disability. So, there's some things that have happened this year that have driven that up. I know in Building Department, they've gotten busier. We've been down a person in there. That's not the whole answer, but we see an increase in activity in the building side of things as well.
Now, three years ago, when we began to look at the budget, and we looked very seriously at overtime, and the efforts to reduce overtime were very effective, and got us down to where we are budgeting this amount, $681,000. Now, we're projecting 1.2 million in expense to overtime. Now that we have more revenue, I can't say that we're not concerned about that expense, but we're willing to accept that expense. And I'm not willing to accept that expense. We've learned to be efficient because we didn't have revenue. We didn't have the money to spend, and so, we were efficient. Let's not stop being efficient. All I can say.
Well, I just comment on that.
And I appreciate your comments. And I believe them, but nevertheless.
Well, I think what, I'll provide the board an analysis of the overtime over the last maybe five years, so you can kind of see where we've been with overtime, actual numbers, and where we project we're gonna be this year. I think that would be helpful, and so, I'll just, I'll pass that on.
Right, thank you.
We can have a lengthier discussion during our budget process, maybe.
Yep. Any other discussion on the matter? Okay, clerk call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
And the third final motion is one to approve the payment of bills indicated on our list. AT&amp;T, these invoices total $15,417.60, I believe this has been separated because we will have an extension. I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion is made by Sullivan. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by trustee Voss. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Meyer.
Epstein.
Okay, motion carries.
This evening on our omnibus list of motions, we have one to pay our bills. Those bills total $1,113,640.64. Some of the major items on that list is a bill from Burger Excavating for sanitary sewer Peter Baker has four invoices totaling approximately $300,000. The first to Grand Dominion for sidewalk work, $10,877. The North Prairie Street resurfacing reconstruction, actually, $179,779. North Prairie Sewer construction, $87,87. And finally, for Peter Baker, the Woodhaven sidewalks, $21,839. We had our usual bill from Lake County Joint Action Water Agency, this time it's $190,853. If anyone has any questions on that bill list or other matters of concern regarding finance, that's all I have.
Okay. I don't hear anything, so we'll move on to public safety.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a motion that I'll make in a moment. It's regarding the donation of excess surplus firefighting gear to the College of Lake County. If anybody has any questions, I believe Chief Sashko is very able to answer. With that, I'll make a motion to pass an ordinance regarding the disposal of surplus village equipment, seen as Exhibit Number PS-1 in your board packets this evening.
Okay, motion is by Simple. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Simple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Okay, motion carries.
Chief Sashko, anything else for fire?
The only thing is the announcement that we have our blood drive this Saturday, right here, from 9:00 in the morning till 3:00. So, I hope everybody in the community can come out and donate, and village board members, and they want your blood. Thank you.
Chief Sashko, excuse me, Chief Gunther, it's, sorry, chief, it's taking me a little while to have that roll off my tongue.
Quite all right.
Chief Gunther, anything for police?
Yes, two quick things. Our female self-defense class starts tomorrow. This will be over 300 ladies that have been trained in this class, and it will begin tomorrow angle for four weeks. And also, we're just completing up with meeting with all school superintendents and review of their emergency response plans since the Newtown, Connecticut incident.
Fantastic, thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor, okay?
Trustee Voss, community development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First is, we had originally planned on having a committee of the whole meeting tonight, but as you see in your packet, instead, we are wanting to go and request, submit a request for qualifications, seeking a consultant, and once the consultant is chosen, then we'll move forward and discuss it in a committee of the whole meeting. So, and Mr. Barratt attached to the, to this motion, a really interesting article that I hope everyone's had a chance to read. So, I would like to make a motion to authorize staff to prepare a request for qualifications, seeking a consultant to establish a brand and identity for the village as seen as CD1 in your packet.
Motion is by trustee Voss. Is there a second? Second by trustee Simple. Question?
Mr. Mayor, I have just a quick question for John. How are we gonna go about posting this, so any firms that are interested in being involved in the branding can respond?
Well, one, we have a good list of firms that are qualified to do this, and so, we'll be sending that out. We'll also post something on our website. I have to defer to Mr. Barratt if there's other, might be some professional magazines.
That is correct. We're also looking at posting a quick advertisement in Cranes, and possibly other, through other agencies as well.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Yes.
Sorry, Simple.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Okay, and then I have a list of some new businesses that have opened. As always, we ask that everyone in town please support these new businesses, as well as other established businesses, and keep our dollars in town. So, the first one is Integrated Care Pharmacy at 905 East Orchard. They custom mix personalized medication as per physician's orders. Sphere, Inc. at 316 Washington Boulevard, Suite 103, that does office and printing. And Reach Rescue at 1122 West Maple. Did they just rename this? I mean, it's not a new rescue organization, right? It's just a new name. All right, and we have another, and the restaurant is the same restaurant with this...
Trans...
Okay, so then, you know, as always, we just want everyone eating in town. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Could you fill in the comments?
Yes, I do not believe that we have any permits or any calls tonight.
Okay. Trustee Lentz, transportation and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have several motions, several topics. First though, I want to announce a meeting for the Lock-Lowman residents affected by the street program and other Lock-Lowman residents that are interested. That's for Thursday, February 21st, 6 o'clock, at the police station in the training room there. And the goal will be to just lay out what's gonna be done, go over what to expect when construction begins, and then to solicit their input and opinions on the curb design and the street design. We have three, let's see here, there's three topics pertaining to Peter Baker and Son and Company. The Woodhaven Subdivision Sidewalk Project, Prairie Avenue, there's a change order, and then Melody Lane Drainage Repair. And then we can, there was a few motions on the 6083 grade separation, so I'll just go through these in order. First of all, regarding the Woodhaven Subdivision Sidewalk Repair, that's Exhibit TNI-1 in your packets. This is a motion to adopt a resolution waiving the formal bidding procedures for Woodhaven Subdivision Sidewalk Repair, approving a purchase order and authorizing payment to Peter Baker and Son Company in the amount of $21,839.83.
Okay, motion is made by trustee Lentz. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Second is by trustee Simple. Any discussion?
How much, Mr. Mayor, how much sidewalk is gonna be repaired in Woodhaven?
That information I don't have available right now, but I can get that to you.
On a unit basis, this is a competitive price?
Based on the unit pricing received with their original bid, of the five bidders that submitted, they were 9% lower with this particular unit price.
Clerk call the roll.
Lentz.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, moving to the Prairie Avenue Construction Project Change Order Number One and Pay Request Number One. This is Exhibit TNI-2 that explains the extra work that was needed. There's three motions here. First, a motion to approve Change Order Number One to the Prairie Avenue Construction Project, increasing the contract value in the amount of $13,342.50, and authorize the village engineer's signature on Change Order Number One.
Second.
Court call the roll.
Lentz.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Okay. Next, a motion to approve and issue a purchase order in the amount of $13,342.50 to Peter Baker and Son Company for the Prairie Avenue Construction Project.
Second. Second by Simple. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I might ask, what was the total for this reconstruction of the pavement? Is this the total amount?
For Prairie Avenue Change Order?
Yeah. No, 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 this is 267, 667.
That was for the entire project?
Entire, they didn't...
Various unit pricing for...
They did it all at the end? I mean, they built it at the end, and then asked us for a partial payment?
Less restoration. Yeah, this is a one-time payment. They're looking for this, and then in the spring, they'll come back with the restoration. This is for the...
Is there a holdback on this?
Yes, there's $13,000 in retainage.
Okay.
The, let me just clarify that Prairie part has been restored, this is just things that are left over. I mean, the sod's down, all that stuff.
Right, correct.
Yeah, so it's all been done. It's just, you know, let's see, make sure it makes it through the winter and check it.
Yeah, when we say restoration, it's more like the punchless items that are remaining outstanding.
Okay.
Any discussion on that? Clerk call the roll, please.
Lentz.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. Finally, in this, oops. Okay, finally, in this category, a motion to make a payment for Pay Request Number One to Peter Baker and Son Company in the amount of $267,666.48 for the Prairie Avenue Construction Project.
Second. Motion by Lentz, second by Simple. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, it's nice to have this road fixed. It's been on the list for a long time, and we've got a business right at the corner of Prairie and Maple that draws people from all over the country, Chris Don's Funeral Home. And you don't really realize how bad those roads were until unfortunately, you're at the funeral home for one reason or another. So, this is a very vital road in Bundeline that finally got fixed. It's good to see.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Lentz.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Okay, and the third category pertaining to Peter Baker is the Melody Lane Pavement and Drainage Repair. This is Exhibit TNI-... This is exhibit TNI-3 in your packets that explains this. This is a motion to adopt a resolution waiving the formal bidding procedures for street and drainage repairs to Melody Lane, approving a purchase order and authorizing payment to Peter Baker and Son Company in the amount of $10,877.75.
Trustee Lentz, is there a second?
Yes.
Trustee Voss?
Thank you. I was just wondering, I mean, since this is a new road and there are several new roads that were all put in in the same time, are we anticipating that we're going to start having trouble with other streets out there?
Not at this time. The reason this one occurred was because of the remaining lots yet to be developed that were then traveled upon with the construction trucks, which then caused the settlement in that immediate area. Future acceptance and warranty periods will be contingent upon the completion of that type of work. We're not going to be accepting the roads until we know for sure that, one, they're not going to be traveled upon by the heavier construction traffic, and two, that they were completed properly.
But there are other roads that were traveled on during construction. And theoretically, I'm just concerned that somehow something happened that we're going to get in trouble with other roads. We're not extending out the time to accept them, so.
And I don't, no, I can't speak to why the warranty period was waived with the acceptance of this particular portion of Grand Dominion. Proceeds me, I'd have to go do some research on that, but subsequent acceptance won't be waiving the warranty period on each road.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Lentz.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Okay, and then the last two motions here tonight pertain to the Route 6083 grade separation at EJ&amp;E Railroad Crossing. This is an intergovernmental agreement. I'm just going to read what's in the packet because it really gives a nice background for those watching at home here. In summary, in August 2012, the board authorized the village administrator to execute a letter of intent with the Illinois Department of Transportation, that's IDOT, allowing IDOT to move forward with procurement of design engineering services for the proposed grade separation options at the 6083 crossing. IDOT received a proposal from Knight Engineers and Architects, Inc., in the amount of $350,295 for the additional grade separation study. Now, the intergovernmental agreement that IDOT is now requesting formalizes the financial commitment from the village for the grade separation alternatives investigation. The engineering services will be fully funded by the money received through the memorandum agreement established with Grand Trunk Corporation, that's Canadian National. And this agreement is specific in its language that it will contribute $500,000, this is in quotes, $500,000 toward engineering, design, and construction of a grade separation, end quote. Therefore, the study will be fully funded and no village funds will be necessary for the engineering of the project. And so the first motion is a motion to adopt a resolution appropriating $350,295 to pay for Phase One Engineering on the Route 6083 Grade Separation Alternatives Analysis.
Okay, motion by Trustee Lentz. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Fire, any discussion?
Yes, and then as long as we're speaking to the folks out in television land, I'd advise no one hold their breath waiting for a grade separation to occur there. I really, really am hesitant to spend $350,000 on something that I'll never see. I hope I'm around for another 20 years, but never going to happen.
And this isn't even in the village of Mundeline either?
I know, but we've got to, you know, we've had a lot of things that you want to engineer. Sometimes we just miss the mark. What was, Canadian National gave us the money, engineer. A road's got to be a road underpass. Anybody have an estimate of what that would cost to build? And it would only happen after Route 6083 were expanded to four, five lanes of traffic. And the five lanes is something that will be a long time coming too. And 20 years from now, or 50 years from now, if ever is built an overpass, that engineering will be so stale, it'll be worse than a Model T. But I'll vote for the motion. And I think it's futile.
Okay, Mr. Simple, you have something?
No, I'm good.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Lentz.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Voss.
Um, yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Okay. There we go.
We have one more motion that I will optimistically offer.
Okay, good. I hope I can optimistically vote yes.
This is a motion to authorize the village administrator to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation defining the village's financial responsibility related to the Route 6083 Phase One Engineering Services.
Second.
Lentz.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that is it for me tonight. Thank you.
Going on in the agenda, we have any other reports? Now move on to the omnibus items. We have three. Are there any that need to be removed this evening? All the omnibus items?
No moved.
Voss, is there a second?
Second.
Voss.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Okay, good. Motion carries. Mr. Libero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one item tonight, and that's a motion to authorize village administrator to request proposals for legal services for drafting a development agreement and helping us with negotiate the incentive agreement between the village and Walmart. As I pointed out in the report, we have a conflict of interest with our normal developer, Holland and Knight, and so.
It would be our attorney, not our developer, just to clarify.
I'm sorry, our attorney, thank you. Our attorney has a conflict with this one, and so we'd like to request proposals from other legal firms.
John, how long is this going to take? Is this going to add any significant delays?
I've, we hope not. That's one of the concerns we have. But our goal, I believe, is to get this done as quickly as possible. So we're going to be sending out the RFP right away. Obviously, we're looking for firms that are qualified that have a lot of municipal experience specifically in development and incentive. So we hope that that will help us move us along at a fast pace.
And part of the RFQ, right, RFP, whatever, or RFing, is that they have to be able to have significant resources that they can respond very quickly once they're on board.
You know, since we don't have an agreement with Walmart, but have they informally agreed to pay our attorney's fees in this regard?
Yes, they have formally agreed to.
They have formally?
Well, we don't have it in, we have it, a verbal agreement.
Handshake.
Okay.
All right.
Right, and to not exceed a month?
That's the way Walmart does things, with a handshake.
There you go.
All right.
Works in Arkansas, should work.
Yes.
All right.
Uh, no, there's no motion.
Somebody wish to make that motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Second by Meyer. Discussion on the motion. Call the roll.
Simple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries.
That's my only report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
No report.
No moved.
Second. Voss, second by Sullivan. Same sign. Motion carries.